Good evening, everybody. Apologize for a few minute delay. Can I have a motion to open? Welcome to everybody to the second public hearing on portfolio review. I'd like to have a motion to open the meeting. Moved by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Bondima, all in favor. Vote yes by Commissioner Richardson, Bondima, Chinia, Kishani, Reed, and Berkeley. Six zero in favor, three absent. A motion passes, the meeting is officially opened. So, we, when we had our first hearing last week, we, technically, we could keep this meeting to two hours and just take testimony until the two hours happens and then we just stop and everybody goes home. That feels rude to me because there's actually forty-eight people who signed up and I really want to hear from everybody. And so, some board members have to leave a little early, but you can trust me that there's going to be those of us who are sitting here until every person has had their say. If we stayed with the normal board rules and let everybody speak for the five minutes, we would literally be here until a little, probably close to ten thirty. Okay? So what we did last time is we, we can vote to waive temporarily policy and we changed it to three minutes and it turned out people, three minutes was a reasonable time for people to make their point. So, there was at least one person in the room who thought that was, couldn't believe that I did that. He just thought that was the most unconscionable act he had ever seen. I respectfully disagreed because the intent is to hear from everybody. So I'm looking for some head nods here and I'm seeing this. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to take a motion from the board to temporarily waive the policy that allows for this public forum to have five minutes per speaker to be three minutes per speaker. And I really want to emphasize this is so we can hear from everybody. Fair enough? Motion to temporarily waive board policy on the amount of time for speaker or public forum. Moved by Commissioner Chinia, second by Commissioner Bondima, all in favor. Motion passes. Richardson, Bondima, Chinia, Kishani, Reed, Berkeley. Six zero with three absent. And again, I know some people have prepared for more comments, just try to make your point. I, if you've experienced me in chairing these meetings, I really try not to be rude to people, but it is so important that everybody gets a chance to speak. So let's try to respect the time and let's just kind of all be in this together. And with that, I'm going to get started and our first guest is Georgia. It's either Greenberg or Grenberg?
Greenberg.
Greenberg.
Currently written, my apologies.
Fair enough.
Good evening, Commissioners, Dr. Santa Lisa's executive staff, thank you so much for having us. I wanted to come back this week. I know I did not finish last week and I trust and believe that you will read my letter or have already, but I did just want to make the point because I ended on kind of the really tough stuff that our kids are going through and I kind of ended on a sad note and I wanted to kind of turn that around. So what I really wanted to say was that we are not unique in Baltimore City schools in having children that have been through trauma, that have been through tough situations. We absolutely know that. But we feel that we're very well equipped to serve those children. We feel that with our additional staff, with our additional resources, that we are very, very well equipped to serve them. And I know I certainly feel privileged to do so every day and would love to continue that opportunity.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nickley Ambrose. I'm here on behalf of Monarch Academy. I'm a resident of Baltimore City. I'm also the statewide elected National Committee Woman for Maryland and I'm a mother of two children. And I feel I hit the jackpot when my children were accepted and went to a nationally word-winning magnet school nearby. I am a passionate advocate of educational freedom. The children of Baltimore deserve a chance in life that starts with a top-notch education they can receive at some of these charter schools. Today, in advocating for Monarch, I wanted to share that I have been there along with Delegate Rick Metzger, Congressman Andy Harris's family, Nicole Harris, and our four-time Merrill spokesperson Anthony McCarthy. And I want to also share with you, I've been through your report. I have it and I know it. And I have to say the Children's Guild already addressed these issues when they changed their leadership team a year and a half ago. And I think it is very important that we give this new leadership team a chance. They have special, seven special educators at Monarch, nine clinicians, seven which are paid for by the Children's Guild. This is a beautiful example of public-private partnership that we need to reward and be grateful for that these resources are being poured into Baltimore to help our kids. And my recommendation, what I'm asking for, is that we look at a three-year renewal for Monarch, but at minimum, we have to give them a one-year probationary period so you can take into account the work this new leadership team has effectuated. Thank you so much and we are here to save Monarch. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next guest is Tiana Wiggins. And just to be prepared, the speaker after cutie pie Ms. Wiggins is Teri Diggs. Just if you can be prepared.
Hello, my name is Tiana Wiggins and I'm a fifth grader at Monarch Academy. I came to share my speech with you all. I came from Beechfield to Monarch. It changed my life. My, my other, um, my other, they, my other school, they bullied me and the teachers cursed. But at Monarch, you don't see what I see. They told me to let go and move on, so I went to make a new life. So Mr. Evans and Ms. Huggo fixed me. I did not walk down here for nothing. It's a reason, not a choice. Please do not close down my school. You don't know what it means to me that you will shut down my life. What school would I, what school would I go to? I don't know. I don't know. Monarch is the best school ever. So at a new school, I, at a new school, I may not fit in. Monarch means everything to me, to us. I will not, we will not let you close down our school. We achieve all our goals, just give us another chance. We promise we do all our best at everything you name. We can do more than you think. Just please, all I'm saying is give us another chance. Do not close down our school. Coming from Beechfield was hard for me because I did not know what it felt like to be in a new school. But Monarch feels like home. But our school, our school serves over every student in each class. We is not the school that should be closed down. The school that, that I go to is the best Monarch Academy school ever. My life has been in Monarch for two years. They teach new things every year. The best school ever.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wiggins. Teri Diggs?
Hello, hello, my name is Teri Diggs. I am a fifth grade student at Monarch Academy. I transferred to Monarch two years ago. Since I've been at Monarch, I have been getting good grades. Adults have held me accountable for, to leave my, adults have held me accountable for things that I do. Leaving my old, leaving my old neighborhood and meeting new kids from different neighborhoods have been a good experience. Adults help, adults help me make smart choices and my A, Ms. Erica, she, she holds me accountable for stuffs and she helps me control my anger. Kids at Monarch are friendly, they help me and, um, when I need, when I need, like, when I need help, our teachers will let us work together on an assignment. The staff at Monarch is excellent, like, when we, like, when somebody gets in trouble, we will go, we will go there and we will just talk to them about what we need help with and how we need to express our feelings and we can, like, take like five minutes in class. And last but not least, please don't close my school at Monarch because if you close Monarch, then we don't know what school we're going to go to. And if you close Monarch, then we'll have to adjust to different people and getting along with different people. And we have already changed our lives around.
Thank you, Mr. Diggs. Our next guest, I don't, I want to make, I don't want to mispronounce it, but it looks like, if, huh?
Isaiah.
Okay.
Ife. I-F-E. Oh, I'm sorry.
It says I-F dash H.
Ife.
Ife, it's I-F dash A, okay. I'm sorry, I couldn't read it. I didn't know if it was an A or an H. Welcome.
Hello, hello, everyone. First of all, I would like to honor the people I'm sitting in front of. And secondly, I want to honor my favorite teachers, Ms. Dagenhart, Ms. Gerardo, and Ms. Robinson, for teaching me and not only teaching me, but molding me for the person who I am today. My name is Ife Olua Adagbon. I put Ife, I put If dash A, so y'all wouldn't mess it up, but y'all still messed it up.
Well, you see how well that worked out. Sorry about that.
And I'm an alumni at Monarch Academy. And today I'm going to be talking about not only why Monarch is different from other schools, but my experience in Monarch and why it was so easy for me to strive at Monarch and me and my peers. My first day at third grade, when I first, my first day at Monarch on Fremont, there was, it was a big change for me and I knew that it was going to be a big change in my life. And it was small rooms. It was one big room that fitted in three classrooms, but that was what made the big difference. That was what made us close and that was what made our bonds. The next year, they let in five hundred new students, but they didn't only let in five hundred new students. They opened up five hundred new minds with creativity, open minds, and just all-around ready-to-learn students. And to this day, still around the school are beautiful murals, beautiful, that follow you just all around the school. Fish tanks, gardens, just everything. And that was what made it so different. That was what made the difference for me and that was what made it feel like a place like home, where I knew I could be accepted and where I knew I could learn and what made it easy for me. Band, student government, crew, wingspan, step, cooking classes, chess club, more and more, all fitted perfectly into my education while still meeting all the requirements for me to graduate. Group service, learning hours, to where you go to clean up and where they got it for a group so it could just be fun for us. That all contributed, that all contributes to the reason why I say, save Monarch.
Ife, where do you go to school now?
Crystal Ray, Jesuit High School.
Great, thank you.
And I'm a stepmother.
Our next guest is Dylan, I think it's either Dylan Wiggins or Dillyad Wiggins.
Hello, my name is Dylan and I came to share a speech with you. I came from Beechfield to Monarch because at Beechfield, they cursed and bullied others. So I went to Monarch and they said, let go and move on. So I let it go and moved on. All the stuff from the past, I let it go and I moved on. I love the school from, I love the school from them first words. When I got to my class, I got excited to talk with my teacher and make new friends. It will be a mistake and please do not, please do the right thing, do not close down Monarch.
Our next guest is Isaiah Suggs.
Hi, my name is Isaiah Suggs and I'll be talking about why Monarch is a great school and why it should remain open. The kids, staff, and teachers are great and if Monarch closes, students will lose their friends, teachers and staff will lose relationships with students, and students will have to go to schools worse than Monarch. Kids may not feel safe at home and feel safe and secure at Monarch. So if the school closes, those kids are having to go back homes, to, having to go back to home schools. Teachers may struggle to find a school similar to Monarch so they can have the same experiences that they have at Monarch. Will you make your final vote? Think about all of this and make a good decision that will benefit students, parents, and teachers. Please continue to believe in us and keep Monarch open so I can continue to be the best student that I can be.
Thank you very much. Our next guest, I believe the last name is Flanagan, but I can't tell if it's Alvin or Jim or something similar to Alvin or Jim. Akira? Okay. Is the last name Flanagan?
Yeah.
Do I got that right? Okay. Sorry, Ms. Flanagan.
It's all right.
Monarch Academy was a school I have started from and ended off from. This school, this school started with me and I want this school to continue with, to help with, to help allow children in Baltimore to help grow and unlock their full potential in their minds and heart. I am currently a ninth grader freshman in Baltimore School of Design and I took the skills that I have, that I have adapted through, that adapted through and progressed throughout my eight years in Monarch. It would be such a disappointment to see a school with grand potential be taken away from a community that gradually needs it. Throughout these years, Baltimore has always struggled with schools that can, that can offer, that can offer high academic structure. And this is by far one of the most exceptional and acceptable schools I have ever experienced throughout my life. And I am proud of having Monarch as my school that I started out with. Monarch Academy has always taught me a thing or two about creativity and I myself has always dreamed of pursuing and to continue on my journey as an artist. Art has been a great passion of mine and I would, and I would have, and I would have probably never got accepted to three museums and I probably would have not been able to be a prodigy in art at thirteen if it wasn't for Monarch. The previous teachers that have, in, that, the previous teachers in the field of visual arts has taught me, from Monarch, that has taught me and inspired me thoroughly to, to go further with my art and present who I am as an artist and represent what I believe in with my own art. I believe that any and all teachers in any medium will push and shove their students to go beyond. Many city children, especially in Baltimore, are facing poverty crisis and situations that will be, that will be unbearable for the young and the youth of Baltimore. Monarch, Monarch Academy gives increasingly high potential for children who can look forward to learning and, and expect, and be determined to reach their expectations that are meant to be impeccable. The Children's Guild, and, the Children's Guild that I have known to be my savior for my school and to have offered me opportunities that I intentionally thought I would never be able to reach and I thought that was impossible. It was when I first arrived to Monarch Academy. Oh, really?
Thank you. Our next guest is Navoa Burden. I'm sorry, you, you. How do you spell your name?
Navia Burden.
Navia Burden, thank you.
Hi, my name is Navia Burden and I go to Monarch Academy. When I heard Monarch might close the school down, I felt sad and hurt because my brother and my uncle and me go here. We all go to Monarch Academy, we all have a connection to Monarch Academy. It'll be sad because we have to go to our neighborhood schools and the neighborhood schools are upsetting and bad. We will all be far away from each other because my uncle is in ninth, my brother is in seventh, and I'm in fifth. We will all be far away from each other because we will not be by each other anymore. So it's going to be hard for all of us because I don't know where we're going to go because the neighborhood schools are really, really bad. And I, but at Mon, some, at my other school, they would treat us bad sometimes. I didn't feel like I was heard and at Monarch, they understand us and they can help us understand more things so we can be ready for the next grade. I went, I want to be able to graduate from Monarch Academy in three years and continue to grow. Please keep this in mind as your, consider your decision. Save Monarch, please.
Thank you. Dr. Cecil Gray?
Good evening. Thank you, Chairperson Santa Lisa, Ms. Cassiani, CEO Dr. Santa Lisa's, Commissioners all. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. Again, I'm Cecil Gray. We started Northwood Apple Community Academy Public Charter School, the first of the Freedom and Democracy Public Charter Schools, August twenty-ninth, two thousand and five, when Hurricane Katrina was hitting. New Orleans classmates came from all over the country, my, my colleagues from the United States Military Academy at West Point where I started, the University of Virginia where I went thereafter, Wesley Theological Seminary where I went thereafter, and then finally Temple University where I went thereafter, and then students who I've taught and such from all, all over the country. So that night was a great celebration. That night, we had in attendance my mother, Victoria Jackson Gray Adams, one of the founders of the Mississippi Freedom and Democratic Party, one of the board members of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference under Dr. King. Dr. King was in and out of our home a few times along the way. I remember him, his last visit in nineteen sixty-eight in the spring, about one to two weeks before he was assassinated in Memphis. We also lived in DC for, for part of my journey and overseas and such. Sonia Sanchez was present the night that the school opened. Vincent Harding was present the night that the school opened. He's the person who wrote much of, who, who made sure that the facts were correct and eyes on the prize. Sonia Sanchez is a world-renowned poet, my mentor when I did my PhD there at Temple. I just cite all of that, some of my background, and those who've been a part of the birthing and the building of NACA. Finally, I want to talk about truth. The documentation that you all have been given as Commissioners, it's not true. And you will receive a packet from our attorneys laying that out systematically. The documentation that was given, it, there, it is essentially allegations. You weren't here on November the twentieth, but if you could see the transcript from November the twentieth, when our attorneys were here, you would see that. And so, that's really problematic. We're teaching children, we're modeling for children. It's about intellectual honesty and academic integrity. And you can't get children to rise up and to grow up and do new things and transform the world if the adults tell tales. So finally, very quickly, again, we will be submitting the documentation along with the videotape for the most charged document, you know, false document. We really appreciate the opportunity. The children will be here tonight, the teachers are here tonight, and we had children, of course, last week for those who were here. Again, if you could go back and look at the videotape, it was powerful. We had some of our graduates as well. We just appreciate the opportunity and it is my hope, it is our hope, and the ancestors' hopes, that you will do the right thing. Let us keep doing our work. We're above the city academically every year of existence. We're above the city in every, relative to finances. Our books are straight every year, no problems with the federal government required audit. We've done the right thing. Let us do our work. Don't let personal pettiness and silliness prevent the right thing. Let the children see a new world and the correct kind of world. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Gray. Our next guest is Ronnie Lambert.
Hello, 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 hi, everyone. I was a little choked up a little bit, but I'm coming to speak on behalf of Monarch in reference of my daughter. My daughter is a special needs student, very special. She have a condition called stereopathy and she's, it's called interspectrum disorder but not, and she has behavior and she has ADHD. And I was told that she graduated from Kendi Krieger before we came here. That means that there was no more help for her. We went through school boards, we went through everything. So I put her name in the pool because Cecil did not call me, so I said, oh, what am I going to do? I need help. So when I got to the Monarch, she was a piece of work. She used to run around the hallways, bite people, do stuff, fight, act out. So her teacher gave her a chance. You know, she had, didn't have a five, five oh four plan, she didn't have IEP, she didn't have anything. And when she first came, I seen the progression. She been there for, since, she's been there since kindergarten, first grade, and now she in the second grade. So they are following her five oh four plan. She's like Riley from the movie Inside Out because you would never know that she had anything going on with her because she always smiled. She always had a vision, she always had a dream. But she would go in classrooms and kids would tease her and fight her and when she gets around people, she's non-communorative. So it's hard for her to adjust to other people. She has had that social skill and she's always been told, you're a bad kid, you're not this kid. But now at Monarch, when she went to Monarch, there is a teacher, her name is Woffel. She followed my daughter five oh four plan. My daughter had attempted to kill herself. The school intervened and talked to me. And, you know, she went to Kendi Krieger and told the teacher, well, I, I don't make it nowhere else, I'm, I'm not doing anything else. Only in school is the only place where I get, where I feel good. And that made me feel so good that these people saved my daughter. You know, she now is, was on an honor roll. First time I ever seen that. She was so happy, she came and she said, mommy, I'm doing so good. The kids, they don't hit me anymore, they don't fight me. And she fights too, but she can't help. Like, if her attention is off, she gets distracted. But this teacher, Ms. Woffel, loved her. She said, I'm going to take time out for her, and she did. Now when she comes home, she is enthusiastic about homework, is the teachers, is the school. Now, some people might need to be adjusted because everybody grows and schools outgrow things, but I think these children need a chance. Without this school right here, I don't know where my daughter would be at. She outgrew Kendi Krieger, that's something to tell somebody. Next time she do something, take her to the crazy boy. I was like, wow. But now she coming home, acting like she's supposed to, she's happy. I ain't never seen her ever like this. I can go to sleep at night now. Thank you.
Our next guest is Donzella Carroll.
Good evening, everyone. I thank God to be able to stand, to sit here and to be before you. I have seven grandchildren who either have attended Monarch Academy or still attend. As a matter of fact, two just started, and my granddaughter came home, she's on the Principal's Honor Roll. She just started there. That shows you and tells you something about Monarch Academy, and she is from another It has been, Monarch has been a blessing to our family. It has been a place where I'm confident that my grandchildren are safe. Staff go the extra mile to reassure me or to reassure their parents that they are safe. Monarch has provided the children experiences that they may never have been afforded. In addition to extracurricular activities such as plays, band, choir, there is wingspan, which allows the parents to know what their children are learning. And during wingspan, the children actually come out of the class and accompany the parents to tell them and to show them what they've been learning. The pantry, they used to have a pantry that helped the families that needed just a little bit more to make it through the month. My grandchildren have excelled in Monarch, and those who have needed help received it promptly, and the results have been accomplished. I have seen my grandchildren blossom and bloom with confidence that will take them through life. That is what is important, that students are successful in life. Grades are important, but in Monarch Academy, there are future philanthropists, engineers, astrophysicists, molecular biologists, attorneys, and so forth. Closing Monarch Academy would place hardships, severe hardships, on parents to find another place of learning. The Carroll family has been with Monarch since its inception and stand behind its excellence and integrity. Please give these children the opportunity to reach their highest goals and to help Baltimore to be known more than a city of crime. Monarch is not only a school, it is a family. Strong families make strong community, and that is what Baltimore needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next guest is Kimberly Flowers.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Kimberly Anne Prey Flowers, and I get to serve as the proud Chair of the Monarch Academy Charter School Board. As a former middle school teacher who got her professional career started here in the city, I have considered it a great honor to now be serving in a capacity that supports the students, the families, and the leadership of this gem of a school in the heart of the Coldstream Homestead Montebello Neighborhood. It has been my great joy to be a part of a school community focused on meeting each child where they are so that every child has an opportunity to realize their potential. I've had opportunities to meet the talented and dedicated teachers who take their jobs and their impact that they have on the children they serve seriously. I've watched students beam with pride while showing off new skills fostered at Monarch. I've witnessed the school's new leadership, working tirelessly to provide the guidance and coaching needed to support the faculty. I've been a part of the decision-making process and the provision of additional resources between the school leadership and the, the Children's Guild. So with all that being said, is there room for improvement? Absolutely. But from my perspective, this is a school that's working and a school that's working effectively. I'm actually grateful for this charter renewal process because it has caused my colleagues and I to become more introspective as a school community. We've had to take a hard look at ourselves, to examine and evaluate ourselves, and ask the questions. Are we serving children effectively? Are we meeting the needs of each student? Are kids actually learning and striving academically? And the answers to all of those questions is an emphatic yes. As a result of this analysis, this deep dive into the Monarch operation, we have emerged even more confident that Monarch Academy is indeed a place where every child's academic talents can be fostered and many of the community's needs are being met. Like, like you all, I take my job as a school board member very seriously. And we've invested, my colleagues and I have vested, invested in the understanding of the processes and facts that have led to the recommendation of a non-renewal of our charter. And one of the facts that we've had to address and take a hard look at, one of the assertions was that Monarch has a problem with chronic absences and we suspend children more than other schools. However, what we've learned as a result of this introspection is that this does not seem to be supported by any evidence. Actually, a close review of the data reflects clear calculation errors for absences and indicates that a vast majority of suspensions relate to only three students who presented very serious behavior and safety concerns. Monarch, Monarch is committed to strengthening fidelity of its attendance data to prevent miscalculations and to catch software glitches that result in duplicative or incorrect reports. Just last week, Monarch and the city schools realized that there had been improperly, the city schools had been inappropriately placing students at Monarch outside of the lottery system. These children had not applied to Monarch and they were some of the most, they were students that had presented challenges at other schools. We've identified seventeen students improperly placed at Monarch this year and are investigating how often this has happened over the years. So, in, in closing, my time has expired, I ask that you vote against the recommendation to close Monarch Academy, and it would be a mistake. The children here are learning and the community is, is thriving. Thank you.
I just have a quick question.
Yes.
What do you mean improperly placed?
Um, we learned-
I mean, school, I mean, our, the kids are, our kids are the same-
Well, what we learned is that these children were not applicants in the lottery process. They had not applied to Monarch. They had showed up at the school with a letter saying, from another school, with, saying that this child should be admitted. That's happened, it's my understanding that it's happened seventeen times.
Okay. And, okay. Thanks.
Welcome.
Chair. Can I please request-
No, sir. No, sir. No, sir. No, sir. Not in this process. No, sir. Sorry, with due respect. The next guest, the first name is Nicholas, the last name begins with a C, it's, could be Cortez, it could be Queto.
Come on, come up here with Nick.
Can you help me with the correct pronunciation of your last name?
Carter. Carter.
Okay, got it. Carter, thank you. Sorry for the mistake.
Great, man, you got it. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Nicholas Carter, and I'm eighth grader at Monarch Academy right now. And I'm here to talk about the experience I had, the experiences I had since third grade at Monarch Academy and why they shouldn't shut down the school. So, basically, I had a good experience at Monarch, and I would like to see some of my younger siblings go through the same thing I went through because Monarch prepared me to go through stuff out of school and in life going, going down the road. And I meet bonds with people I probably wouldn't have met in other schools, and it's like, Monarch doesn't just box you in, it lets you explore the rest of the type, the rest of the opportunities that, that's out there that you wouldn't get in other schools or in other places in life. And then, and some people, I know there's some kids in my school that are my friends, they don't live in the best neighborhoods, so when they come to school, it's like, it's a different environment and energy for them. And when you come to Monarch, it's, it's kind of like a change for you, and a better change at that. So, shutting down Monarch wouldn't be a good choice for some kids. And when you say some kids, it's actually breaking bonds with other kids as well, so there's more kids at that. And then, and then you got kids like me that made bonds with other kids that didn't come from the same, from the same-
Neighborhood.
Uh, the, the same, um, back, yeah, the same background as me. And when we, when it's hard to, um, when it's hard to connect to each other, Monarch makes it way easier because of the teachers and staffs and stuff like that. But, yeah, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We got one more student, Kamai Diggs. All right.
Hello, my name is Kamai, and I'm currently at eighth grade at Monarch Academy. I've been at Monarch since I was in second grade. When I first came to Monarch, I felt like the school was for me. This school has been in three locations, but it didn't change the relationship with the school as they. Throughout these past six years at Monarch, I had so many friendships that came and went, but I finally realized that friendships wasn't really important. The important thing was to get my work done and start graduating and succeed in life. But when my school gets shut down, how will I accomplish my goal? All I'm asking is my school to stay open so everyone can have an opportunity to see like I want to. My siblings that go to my school wants to follow my footsteps, but my school gets shut down, they won't be able to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Terry Jones. I'm a parent of Monarch Academy. This is my son, Terry Jones Jr. You may remember him from last week during the, for the brain, the whole brain. This is my daughter, Chloe Jones. She's a kindergartner at Monarch. I brought them to speak, so I wanted them to tell you what Monarch means to them. What does Monarch mean to you?
Monarch is special to me because when I went there on my first day of kindergarten, they didn't believe me. They, the boy, he was my best, he became my best friend on the first day, and now he became my godbrother. And I want the school to close down because the school mean very much, means very much to me because Monarch is the best school in the world.
And tell, tell the board your five promises that you learned at Monarch. Can y'all say it together?
Be kind, be safe, be honest, be productive, let go, be move on.
Thank you.
Our next guest is Eric Smith.
Good evening. My name is Eric Smith, and I'm also a parent at Monarch Academy. I came here to speak a little bit about Monarch, and the more I start thinking about it, I said I'm gonna speak a whole lot more about Erin Logan-Smith, which is my daughter that attends Monarch Academy. Erin comes to Monarch from a different school, which I'm not gonna speak on, but I'm gonna speak on what she's been doing since she's been at Monarch. She's very outgoing right now as her third year at Monarch. She was a very shy student, didn't speak for herself very well. This is all a part of Monarch's learning and the academics that they are teaching her. Her grades are extremely high, she's on an honor roll. Erin's spelling, her math, her reading, it's excellent. Monarch, I'm not gonna say is a perfect school, but I'm gonna say they strive for perfection. From the time she's been there, from her first teacher, Ms. Permski, to her second teacher was Ms. Wolford, and to now, Ms. Crawford. Every morning, she's excited about going to school, you know, and I love that about her right now. I miss so much to speak about Monarch, just from walking through their beautiful hallways. And more than anything, though, I'm gonna say, not just the academics, is that when I leave Erin at Monarch Academy, I have no worries. I'm not worried about her being harmed, and I'm, and I, and I love, and I fear a lot for my eight-year-old daughter with today's society and what's going on in Baltimore and the state of Baltimore. But when she's in Monarch, I feel like she's with family. When I need to find out anything about her, I can email or go to their school or call, and every, any of my concerns are addressed. But I learned about what's going on at Monarch and them being up for renewal, kind of concerned me, and I, I was kind of confused because of all that I see that's going on in the school. So I might not have a full understanding, but when I see a school that is striving, a school that has air conditioning and heat, I see a school that's clean, that's, that has a lot of pride, that has character, a school that strives on excellence far as their academics, it concerns me that they're up for renewal when I thought we should be here to duplicate this school. This school, again, like I said, is not the perfect school, and I don't know none of that are, but the fact that they strive and every day they are getting better at what they do, I think that, the point I'm trying to make is that the administration at this school, the teachers' sacrifice at this school, their dedication to learning, I mean, to teaching these students and moving forward. I see a new generation in this school, I see community activists in this school, I see new leaders in this school. So I see a bit, a lot that's going on in Monarch. So when I pick my kid up from school, just coming into that gymnasium, the kids that run up to me and speak to me from Ms. Crawford, that's excited about telling me what they learned and how their day went, I see kids that are active, and I think that this will be a change for Baltimore. So, to do away with a school like this, I don't think it benefits us. I think it should be more of how to perfect the school and make it better. And I know my time is gone, so I want to thank y'all for at least letting me get up here to speak.
Thank you for coming.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm Nancy Scheinman, a professional artist and the artist that designed all of the experiential learning environments at Monarch Academy. I support the Monarch Academy. I have had the pleasure of collaborating with the operators of Monarch and the Children's Guild for almost twenty-five years. When Monarch first opened, I walked through the hallways and was delighted by what I saw. A young girl pulled at my jacket and said, "How did the artist know what my store looked like?" I asked her what she meant by "her" store, and she said, "The pet shop. The pet shop painted on the wall. That is my store. That's the exact store I will own when I grow up." Monarch is about seeing possibilities, the possibilities for moving a community away from endemic poverty, for stronger families, for a successful school, the possibilities children need to see every day. The experiential learning environments are not only a unique teaching tool, but they give every child who walks through the doors a feeling that they are loved, are valued, and that they belong somewhere special. But the environment is not the only reason to keep Monarch open. As an alternative learner, I know firsthand how important the arts can be to a child having difficulty in school. The innovative approach that Monarch has to enrichment experiences is proven. Many students come from traumatized backgrounds. The school provides additional staff to support children as they work through the stress of traumatic experiences. They have seven social workers, behavior coaches, aides, and many others on board to help children navigate the emotions that hinder their ability to focus on their schoolwork. Over one hundred students receive special ed services at Monarch. The Children's Guild that oversees the Monarch Academy has a sixty-five-year track record in serving children with special needs. Ask the family served, and they will tell you they're very pleased with the care that their children are given at Monarch. Monarch is working hard to improve educational outcomes for students with a whole-student community-school approach. They've invested fifteen million in the school building and have purchased ten abandoned homes to renovate, to decrease blight, and create affordable housing for the Monarch families and teachers. Just the beginning of a long-term investment in the Chum Neighborhood. If Monarch closes, students will lose a supportive environment. They will be returned to schools lacking in basic necessary needs: clean running water, heat, enrichment opportunities, and importantly, the denial of family choice. The building will become yet another vacant building in an already blighted neighborhood. People have different learning styles. Achievement should not only be measured by standardized testing. Okay, so I'm almost done. With- With the state of Baltimore City Schools, one can surely see that teaching to a test doesn't work. These children and families are the future of Baltimore. Please don't deny them the choice to send their children to a school that encourages out-of-the-box thinking, imagination, and innovation. Please keep Monarch open. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next guest is Neil Young. Seriously, it's Neil Young. I was, I knew somebody would get it. Everybody over 50 laughed. It's the only name I could pronounce.
Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak. My experience with the Children's Guild has been as a board member and been very involved in many of their programs. And I'd like to start with a story that Principal Hargrove shared with me a few weeks ago. It's about a little girl who goes to Monarch, and she witnessed her mother gunned down by an ex-boyfriend. And where did she go the next day? She went to Monarch because that's where she felt safe. That's where she felt protected because Monarch has become a family. And if you close Monarch, what you're gonna be doing is not only disrupting a family of almost 1,000 families, but disrupting the kids and the parents who have counted on this school for the education of their children. And my understanding is that you're evaluating this based on low test scores. But low test scores compared to what? And what's more important, taking a child who's been traumatized? Some of these kids have seen more violence than our servicemen and women in Afghanistan have seen recently. They have PTSD. And what Monarch Academy has been doing for those kids is to bring them out of their shells. And what's more important than building young men and women who can graduate from Monarch, who can become the backbone of Baltimore city society? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next guest is Ahmed Evans.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Board of Commissioners. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to represent Monarch Academy. My name is Ahmed Evans. I am the head. I'm, I'm here basically to speak for the people that aren't here, okay? I'm not here to blame anyone, or I'm not here to do anything. I'm here to speak for that young gentleman who relies on Monarch's supports. I'm here for that parent who might not have finished high school, but has decided to put their faith and their trust in us here at Monarch to leave, to have their child leave the neighborhood that they have lived in maybe two, three, four generations to get exposure. I'm here for the student that needs the mental health clinician to deal with some of the trauma that they have dealt with. And I am very particular to our young men and our young boys, who I consistently try to mentor, who I try to be a beacon of hope and a hero to. And therefore, I wanna continue to build with the two women that I'm standing here next to, that we came into Monarch last summer and are continuing to build academically, socially, and make and be a hallmark in the Chum community.
Good evening, Commissioners, and Dr. Santalise and CEO in Baltimore City Public Schools. I'm Principal Hargrove. And Juan, I'd like to thank those of you who have been to the school. And as a product of Baltimore City Public Schools, I am very proud to be a part of this system and a part of this process. This has been such a learning process for all of us. The parents, the teachers, and the students have entrusted my, entrusted their lives to me as their leader, and I come to you with a breadth of experience. Not only have I had the opportunity to teach at, in Baltimore Public Schools for a number of years, I also won the Milken Award as a teacher. And I bring that talent, and I believe in teacher effectiveness. And I believe that part of this work is gonna be about building human capacity at our school and those teachers who are prepared to teach those students that are not here, represented, and those that are the 1,000 babies that are there. I am very proud to be a part of this team, and I'm glad to work with them. And I just wanted to bring Ms. Nicholson as a part of the team as well.
We love the Children of Baltimore City. We're gonna work hard. We know there's lots of work to do. We make no excuse. We're gonna make sure that our babies have what they need academically, socially. And I just wanna just give you our confidence that we love our children, we care about them, and we will do the hard work that it takes to make sure that they succeed. Thank you.
We have a question from Commissioner Chinia. Thank you. I just wanna entertain a question.
Yeah, I, I was trying to ask one of the younger folks. So I'm gonna ask you all as the, as the school leaders. And I, I mean, we've, I've heard a lot this evening and the last couple of sessions around the resources that you have available in terms of students that have emotional needs. I've heard a lot about the special education services. And a lot of folks have made mention about test scores. And I, and I hear you, everybody feels the same way. That is how the state looks at all of our schools, however. So I, my question is, as you're making the promise around academics, what specifically, and as you look at your data, are you planning to do that's gonna make a difference in terms of it? Because that is a key area that, that we need to take a look at.
Absolutely. So the first thing is literacy. And what we've done is we have introduced and put a great deal of effort around interventions because last year was, you know, our, our base year. And what we found is that many of our students were struggling with literacy. They had a hard time comprehending what they were reading. Many of them could read words in front of them, but they did not understand in terms of context what it was being asked, specifically in mathematics. They could, you know, process and actually apply the math concepts. But when it came to word problems, they began to become very scrambled. The other piece that we have focused on tremendously, so that goes to the literacy piece. But the other piece is character development. Many of our kids that you heard, you know, a handful of them have just come to us. And one thing that they suffered with was confidence and efficacy. And so at the Children's Guild, what we introduced last year was something called Whole Brain Teaching, right? Whole Brain Teaching really focuses on improvement over time. We, I can't stress enough that standardized assessments are a part of the equation. They are important, but that does not negate, negate progress. What we're saying is that our message to our children is that, yes, you may not be there right now, but with effort, with, with concerted time, with your teachers, with your parents, you can get there. Like, the thing is that we focus on is that our students are not in competition with other students from other schools. We teach them that they are in competition with themselves. And when you change that mindset, it, it sends a different message to a kid that, yes, while I'm not there, progress does matter with practice. So those are the two things that we have really focused on, building character development to make sure that our kids have efficacy, to understand the power that they do have inside of themselves, that they can get there. And then the other piece is literacy. Because our kids did not have the, have the stamina to sit in front of a test and be focused and be ready and attentive to really show their true intelligence on those tests. So those are two of the major things. But we have, we are focusing tremendously on literacy this particular school year.
I would encourage you, and since we still have some time and we're deliberating, and I'm hearing what you're saying, but I'm really looking for a little more detail in terms of specific strategies within the area of academics. I hear literacy, and I hear intervention, and I absolutely understand the issue about efficacy. But having some data about what students are doing and what kinds of strategies you're gonna put in place that will really ensure that that's gonna look a little different. To my knowledge, the rating system isn't going away. And so whether we like it or not, we're gonna need to be able to, to, you know, to really take a hold of that data, look at our instructional program, and see what happens. I would encourage you to give a little more information around that area. I'm not gonna say necessarily tonight.
I got you. We will, we will flesh that out, like small groups and Goddard Rennie.
Just more specifics for me, at least, around what your strategies are academically.
And I think for me, I'm also, I am trying to take this all in and read all the material, read it once, check it twice, study it. And while a couple of you are new to this, the Children's Guild has been operating this school for eight years. So there's, I mean, it still raises a question in my mind. I mean, these are the, we, we have a very clear rubric instead of standards that we use in evaluating every single one of our charter schools for years now. And we place a, and it's been, it's well-known that we place the highest weight on the academic outcomes, and we, we, people know what we evaluate on. So yes, I, we understand. So I'm just, I'm listening. But I, I'm also trying to take in that while there's a new team, this is an operator who's been operating a school for eight years. And it, that's not lost on me. There's something not copacetic for me. So these facts are like not adding up. So I hear you, and I appreciate the educator on the board asking for the details because I think that's, that is important. But there's something else there that I'm, that it's a head-scratcher for me.
So I can say on this board chair that when, when Monarch first developed into this school community, we started off very small, okay? And, and when the school came, we, we used a standardized assessment of MSA, right? And so we all know that the MSA standards are completely different in terms of the level of rigor for students regarding state standards. And so you, what we experienced is this exponential growth of families who needed a different type of setting for their children. So we went from 300 to 600 to nearly 1,000 students. Now, what I can say is that, you know, over time, the standards change, our students change, and the Children's Guild recognized that they needed to change. And as a result, they took a deep dive in terms of leadership. And so they made some very bold changes. We had some very hard conversations with the staff to say, "Hey, are you all in?" And that "all in" looked different from previous years. I can say that one thing that I am appreciative of the Children's Guild is their agility and flexibility and being responsive to the change and the needs of the community, the student body, the family. Because our community has changed drastically over the year. When we first started out, we had many families who were very supportive of their children, very vested in their children's education. And as we moved along over the six-year span, that support became very, very different for some of our children. The behaviors became much more aggressive. Parents were struggling more. And then obviously, academically, our kids were not where they were. I admit that there is a lot of work to do. But I also ask of you to look at the data. And as far as the, the rubric, the rubric has changed every year. And the reason why the rubric has changed every year is because the district has identified that they needed to shift and become more adaptive to the changes that we had experienced in Baltimore City. So as Baltimore City continues to shift their rubric, so is the Children's Guild as far as our strategy and how we approach to work and what type of leadership changes need to be made. So I would agree that you do need a level of effectiveness in terms of a framework. But I would say that that framework should be revisited because there are some components that are not included that should be included inside of that framework. So we talk about the economic disadvantage rate. Yes, that exists. But what about a child that receives direct certification and is a special needs student? What about that student who is a direct certification, special needs, and they're homeless? Like, there are many factors that need to be considered. And I would say that let's come to the table, let's get more input, not that we have all of the right answer. But what happens is there is this tension. And I'm probably, you know, gonna send some, some, some raised brows from this. But there is a known tension between the city schools and charter schools. I would be the first to say, let's come to the table. These are all of our children. I'm not saying at all that the leadership team has all of the answers. What I am saying is that I am an experienced turnaround leader. I feel very competent in our leadership team, and we are open to making sure, not just about Monarch, but what is going to be best for the children that reside in the city of Baltimore. It's not, it's not fair to just cut it off at a cut score. What about our children who cannot make the cut score for some of the signature schools? What happens to those kids? Well, you have a school like Monarch Academy who invites them in to provide them those opportunities that they may not otherwise be offered.
So I can appreciate that. First of all, none of this has anything to do with tensions between charter and traditional schools. So let's just put that aside because the, they, whatever process we use to set the review for charter schools, at the end of every single year, it's reviewed by a team of charter people, staff people. So there's the advisory board, that, there's input on that every single year. So that's, that is not something the school system does unilaterally. And it's annoying to us that the state, us, all of us, collective us, that the state keeps changing the assessments, right? But we, we are holding everybody to the same standard. So it's, the rules didn't change just for you, they have changed for everybody. So I mean, it's, and the kids are all the same. So this notion that there's a set of kids that come to Monarch, and then there's a set of kids that go to everywhere, it's just not true. And there's also a statement that was made earlier about how horrible the other schools were. That's definitely not true. There's a couple of schools very much in the neighborhood who are high-performing schools, and it's just, it's not acceptable to disparage them. You didn't do it. So I, I'm, it was numerous speakers ago. I kinda wanted to let it float out there in the ether because I didn't wanna call it out. But I just wanna be careful, and I appreciate your responses because it's helpful because I think we can all feel, not that, not the tension you referenced because that's like so not in this room. You brought it in, and that's cool, but that's actually not relevant to the debate tonight. But I think that this is a hard process for all of us, and we are looking at the data. We are considering all the needs of a child. But there's a lot of considerations, and we're trying to use a fair and equitable process. It might not feel like that to everybody, but I'll just say that that's how I'm trying to do it. So Ms. Perkins Cohen, you have a comment you wanna make?
I just wanted to make one clarification, too. And just to remind everybody that the comparisons are to a comparison of like schools. So it is not all the factors you talked about, but the purpose is to, and this was from feedback, among other things, from operators and part of the improvements we made over time, was to make the comparisons not just to every school in the district, not to compare you to selective schools versus non-selective schools. Your comparison group is to similar schools. And so that is when a school is rated not effective in academic categories, it is because they are below 50% in a group of, within a group of schools that serves a similar population.
Yeah, I appreciate that. What, what I was referring to is that when we, when we say comparable like schools, we're talking about economic disadvantage rate. And what the comment was gestured towards was there are other factors that I think we can include to really get a more clearer picture around what schools are like in terms of comparison.
Commissioner Bondemian, I'm sorry, I had my microphone off.
I think that you've all said everything that I might wanna say. But what, so tonight, I just wanna bring out the, you know, we have these feelings about what's going on, and we visited the school, and, and I'm hearing everything that you're saying that you're doing now. I'm really impressed with the fact that you have a new board chaired and, and looking at some of the bios of some people is, is positive on that part. However, I'm really concerned, it keeps wearing on me. All of this that's going on now that's new, that you're doing, at this point, I'm concerned with what happened, why now? I think that you talked about changing your leadership and your, your staff. All of this is going on, and we're at this point right now. And I appreciate the fact that the kids are being loved and cared and wrapped around and all those beautiful things that's going on. I'm one, I'm there with you. However, my colleague just talked about the academics. And the question that I have, academics are critical. And the question that I have, academics are critical. When they leave that wraparound service that you're giving them, which I think is wonderful, when they leave that school, my concern is what happens after they leave the school? Now, I asked the question, and I'm one of the people that will say what's on my mind, would I send my child to that school? Yes, on one point, because I see what you're offering those kids. But my other point is, when they leave that school and go away from you, what happens then? And we hear from the kids who alumni of the school, and I asked the question, what's going on after they leave you? Are they getting what they need to move on? And some of those questions are critical. And I think that you guys, I, I love it. I think, yes, I would send for the love and affection, but would I do that if I was concerned about the grades? And that's what the chair is talking about. That's what we, they look at in the state of Maryland. And we know that, it's not that we're trying to shut you down because we don't like you, the bottom line is what happens after those kids walk out of that school, when they move on to a higher, higher level, higher, higher school, upper schools? What happens then? So my, my question, maybe it's not my question, what happened before this year? Why are we at this point? All these beautiful things that you're saying, which is correct, why, why didn't you have these services in place before and why now? And that puts you in a critical situation. You see what I'm saying?
Yes. And, and, and thank you for those comments. I think what it was, it was a good problem. You know, I can only speak from the time that I was at the Children's Guild, but what I do know is, you know, I had an opportunity to visit in 2016, 17. And what we saw that really needed to be present or more deeply was a connection to the community. So the organization spent a lot of time on identifying the right-sized leader. And we were having some issues with some of the children connecting with some of the previous leadership. And, and there was, you know, a little bit of push from our parents to really begin to diversify our school. And, and then looking at the academics, we looked at, our academics were flat, we weren't growing, we weren't moving. So it was a culmination of things. It was what does our school need so that our kids can feel connected, better connected to our community? What are some of the things that we need to provide in terms of resource? And that resource came in the form of people. Our organization has been very generous in terms of providing resources, in terms of funding, materials from our students, support in the form of mentors. And what we did not have that was different was we had mentors who worked inside of the school. And yes, there were good things happening at Monarch, as you heard from some of our alumni or our older students who had been there. But the organization recognized that it wasn't enough and that we needed to make some bold decisions if we wanted to create the change that spoke to our philosophy on educating students. And so, so I can say from my experience, when I was there, when I observed, I saw teachers teaching, I saw the building leadership leading, but it just wasn't enough. And so when you are, when you are trying to stay true to your philosophy, it really isn't about if the person is nice or if the people are nice. We really have to get to the data and to begin to analyze and see what's working well and what's not working well, which is why I value assessment and evaluation. I think that this is a great opportunity for us to learn and get better. I, I, I think that top-down. But in recognizing what you said, it does take time, it is a part of the natural annual assessment process, because great organizations, they do that. They assess year after year and say, what's working, what's not working, and how do we get better? And I think that that is reflective of what the Children's Guild has tried to do over the number of years they've been servicing children of Baltimore City.
I want to thank you. I didn't mean for us to, to get quite as involved, and as I said, I would encourage you to put some things in writing if you want to send some additional documentation. Thank you all. I'm gonna move to the next two, I'm gonna read off the next two names to come up. First is Tanisha Bryant, and then, she'll be followed by Bria Hamm.
Hello, my name is Tanisha Bryant, and I am a parent and I'm a volunteer at Martin Luther King Elementary Middle School. And...
Hello, I'm here from Martin Luther King Elementary School, and I'm a parent as a volunteer. And since my nephew has been going to Martin Luther King, his grades have came up. He used to go to Edgecombe, one of the schools that you're considering the children to go to. He just came from there. I spent two years in there with him, every day, all day. It was not a very pleasant time there. We had a lot of ups and downs there, we had a lot of meetings every day, we had IEP meetings And since my nephew's been going to Martin Luther King, his grades has came up. He has report cards that had nothing but U's all the way down, not one class he had to eat. He's been to Martin Luther King from September to now. He received one U.
Good job. Thank you.
Now, I'm not saying he's the best kid, but he came a long way. So to take that from him, and I have two other children there too, it's not worth it.
Thank you. We, thank you. You guys, we, I got your letter here. You guys say that you want to preserve the Dr. Martin Luther King name, junior name in the school. We don't believe you, the fame group in the Park Heights community. You said that you cost $14 million to renovate the school and that don't include structural damage. We don't believe you in the Park Heights community. You said that, earlier you said that you guys are focused on academic performance. The Dr. Martin Luther King Junior School is the number-one academic performance school in the community. And that's supposed to be your primary concern. What we have asked you guys to do is, you came, you guys came to us November the 2nd and you said, we're gonna be closing, we're gonna take a recommendation to close your school on January, three months. We've been fighting with this school for 48 years. If somebody you dealt with for 48 years come to you and say, I don't think I love you more than three months, I'm gonna leave you, you look at them and say, you never loved me anyway. Okay? Because that's the truth of it. Now, I'm telling you, what we got is the land. We got enough land adjacent to the school that we can build a new school. We don't want you to put $14 million into the white elephant you gave us. We want to build a new school on the land adjacent to the white elephant you built the white elephant on. And we can keep that school open while you build that school, use it the third, fourth, and fifth floor, and the community will do the renovations, wire the school for Wi-Fi, sand the gymnasium, and make it ready for next year's school year. We need an empathetic ear from you. And I'm gonna tell you something very quickly, I don't want either one of you, and it was 15 last time I was here, now I see approximately eight on the school board, I don't want not one of you to take a vote ever in your life on closing down a Dr. Martin Luther King's junior institution. That's something you ought not to have to do in your lifetime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hamm?
Hello, everyone. This is...
Hello. Hi, my name is Bria Hamm. I am a grade three and four math teacher at Martin Luther King Elementary School. Some of my students are sitting next to me right now. Recently, well, when I graduated from school, I went to the Baltimore City Teaching Job Fair where Principal Brunson took a chance and hired me. I have been teaching for five years, all of which have been served at the school. After my second year of teaching, I had the opportunity to lute with my students. This is now my fourth year teaching these same scholars. While having the opportunity to lute with many of my scholars, I have, I have experienced with my students the importance of building relationships and how my close relationships to both my students and their family has helped foster a positive learning environment where my students can learn as a family. I'm the only elementary school teacher at MLK who has spent that many consecutive years with my scholars. I strongly believe that because of my time spent with my scholars, they have been able to advance academically. My third-grade scholars had the highest A-NAT quarter-one scores in Network One, and the second-highest in the district. Although I know that I would not be able to move with my scholars throughout their entire academic years, I do worry about the overall well-being of my scholars with such a drastic change to what is, to some of them, the most consistent factors in their lives. At city schools, I feel that it is our duty to engage and promote a student wholeness of a scholar. As included in student wholeness, we as educators are expected to meet not only the academic and physical needs, but also the social and emotional needs of our students. Since the proposed closing of my school, I have wondered how will my students' social and emotional needs be met when they are forced to leave what is the only consistent thing that some of them has known within less than a year? As adults, yes, I know we will manage, but what about our scholars? The reasons why we go to work every day. Scholars who merge with other schools, I feel sometimes, do not thrive academically as much because they are under social and emotional stress. So if our goal is to promote academic success and the overall student wholeness of the child, how can we do so when our solution is just to re-traumatize scholars who have already been through so much in their lives? I understand that our students do deserve safe environments with working air and heat, which is one of the concerns of closing MLKs. And they do deserve access to resource and materials. But as a part of a safe environment, they deserve the teachers that they see every day. I hope that overall, we can invest in our students, and I propose that you keep our school open, but if not, at least keep us with our students and keep the Dr. King community together. Thank you.
Can I just say one quick thing? If you had to have a teacher representative, I'm glad it's one whose classroom I got to see.
Thank you.
Who is as good as you say that you are.
Thank you.
Can you introduce yourself? Oh, do they have something to say?
They have something to say. They're just, they're just next, I'm just gonna stay with them.
Totally fine, that's totally fine. I just want to make sure they introduce themselves. Now I can see they have papers. Are you Madison and Allison?
Madison and Kamani. It's, oh, it's Madison and, it's just Madison.
It's okay.
Go ahead.
It's whoever it is can speak, that's fine.
Hi, my name is Madison Ward. I am a...
Oh, I got it. Go ahead, go ahead. Can you start again? Can you start again?
Hi, my name is Madison Ward. I am a third grader at Dr. MLK Elementary School. What I like best about my school, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Elementary Middle School, is how much the adults really care about the students. Going to the school has changed my life and made me happy. I now can say that I like school because of the people at Dr. King. I have had the same teacher, Ms. Hamm, since kindergarten, and she has always helped me and taught me to love school, and I love her for that. I also love Ms. Judy and Ms. Stewart. I, I have the best teachers. I, I like my teachers and I like that they help us understand our work. I like when we have lunch bunch and get to spend time with our teachers. Everybody in the school knows my name and helps me when I am upset. They all care about me and try to make sure I have a great day. I love, I love that we take fieldships and have follow-up PBIS events. The teachers try their best to get to know our family because we are one big happy family here at Dr. King. The teachers seem to love their jobs and they, they love the students. I like how the teachers try to make school fun. I look forward to coming to school every day because of the, of my teachers and friends that I have at my school.
Hi, my name is Kamani Ward, and I'm a third grader at Dr. MLK. I love MLK because my teachers and friends. Dr. MLK should not close because I get better grades, it should stay open because they have a great, a good principal. It should stay open because they have better teachers. It is a bad idea because this is the best school ever. I like my teachers because they reward me when I do the right thing. I like that I get to help others at my school. I like that I get to go on lots of trips with my class. I will be sad and mad if I have to leave my friends and teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Thanks for coming. Math. Our next guest is Allison Ambrose.
It's hard to follow them. My name is Allison Ambrose, and I'm a teacher at Dr. King. It was mentioned at the Steering Committee meeting last week that as a small school, we might be unable to offer our scholars particular programming, that Edgecombe and Pimlico do not offer the same outside-of-school experiences that we do at the moment because they decided to use their budgets a different way. But I don't think that our scholars should have to choose between enrichment activities that make them well-rounded citizens and their academics, and at Dr. King, they will not have to. We are able to offer a variety of class trips because we fundraise. One of our partners was just awarded a grant that can allow our scholars to have an after-school program. We are a small school, but we are a dedicated, hard-working, and creative one. Let us know the programs that are offered at Pimlico, at Windsor Hills, at Calvin-Rodwell, and we will offer them at Dr. King as well. Since the blueprint was introduced, there's been a lot of focus around the idea of student wholeness and social-emotional learning. But I wonder how we can argue that we're keeping the whole child in mind when we abruptly close a school? And I wonder how we can argue that we're keeping the whole child in mind when we haven't solidified the answers to even the most basic questions that our school families have, such as, how are you going to ensure that my child is safe in their new school? Questions around scholar safety, scholar adjustment, and preserving the name and legacy of Dr. King should be thoughtfully planned out long before a school closure announcement is made. These are serious and should be given serious thought and extensive discussion and planning, not just something that we throw together with our fingers crossed a few months sometime, in a few months sometime after January. I've asked you to let our scholars, families, and communities know that they are worth it. I've asked you to stand with us and show our families that their children's safety is paramount. Now I'm asking for your confidence. Confidence that Dr. King can continue to support our scholars in academics and enriching activities. Confidence that the relationships and trust we have built with families will continue to grow and strengthen. Confidence that our hard work and dedication and the hard work and dedication of scholars, families, and partners will continue to make Dr. King a school our scholars and the community can be proud of. Confidence that we deserve time and support to demonstrate how our programs, partnerships, and initiatives will help our scholars grow. I'm asking you for your confidence and maybe just a little bit of faith. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ambrose. Our next guest is Makaya Douglas. Ms. Douglas, did I say your first name properly?
Yes. Hello, and good evening, everyone. My name is Makaya Douglas, and I am a seventh grader at Dr. M, Dr. Martin Luther King Elementary Junior. What? And Dr. Martin Luther King Elementary Middle. I like my school because it's like a family. This school is home to children who attend the school. This school shows and represents great people and who can be even greater. This school represents the greater things in life. This is what Dr. Martin Luther King dreamed of. I love how this school has people... I love how this school has people who care. They care about kids who are different. We have people who will give their last to help others. They will give everything they have. Every child is special at this school, from the tiny pre-K kids to the young adult eighth graders. Everyone wants to help us succeed. They want us to go places, and this school is the perfect example of a good start. This school has molded me into a great student. I was mean-rooted and disrespectful. The mindset I had before was terrible. When I started to understand what teachers tried to tell me, I became respectful and a hard worker and a great student. And I thank them for everything. This school is a great way to begin life.
I'm speaking next. My name is Lindsay Labar. Good evening. My name is Lindsay Labar and I am a teacher at Dr. Martin Luther King. I want to take a moment to recognize the MLK scholars, families, and staff members that came out tonight, both inside of this room and in the overflow room. If you're from Dr. MLK, can you please stand? Thank you, MLK. Have a seat. A University of Arkansas study found that enrichment field trips contribute to the development of students into civilized young men and women who have a stronger critical thinking skills, exhibit increased historical empathy, and display higher levels of tolerance. With this in mind, especially in the last two years, Dr. Martin Luther King has made a concerted effort to offer our scholars these enriching experiences. Our scholars have gone, or will be going to in this coming year, to the Reginald F. Lewis Museum, the Baltimore Museum of Art, the Annapolis Opera House, the White House Visitor Center, the Chesapeake Bay Watershed, the Electronics Museum, Under Armour Success Fest, and Six Flags Science Day. We did not give up any of our money budgeted for books or academic endeavors. We have held fundraisers. We've held fundraisers at Chipotle, California Pizza Kitchen, Chuck E. Cheese, Scholastic Book Fairs, and Carrabba's, just to name a few. We have one next month at Chipotle, if you would like to come, 41st Street. It is on January 28th. It is a Monday night. Moving on, sorry. Not only did these activities raise money-
Not sorry. You're not sorry.
No, please come. I will send you a flyer. Not only did these activities raise money for our school, but they were also opportunities for our families, community members, and staff members to strengthen their relationships. When we asked whether our scholars would have the same opportunities at other schools, we were told that there was no guarantee. It is a disservice to our scholars to eliminate these enriching class trips, and closing Dr. King could very well mean closing the doors on these opportunities. Please do not close these doors. Our scholars deserve better. Thank you for your time and attention.
She's next. Are you Ms. Adams?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Milan Adams and I'm an eighth grader at Dr. Martin Luther King Elementary Middle School. I've been at Dr. MLK since I was four years old. Our school represents growth, achievement, and partnership. Being a student at Dr. Martin Luther King Elementary Middle School has affected me for the good. Not only have I met my closest friends here, but I've met a family. Staff at this school loves and care for us as if we were their own. This school has brought people from the whole community of Park Heights together. Shutting down the school would break the hearts of hundreds of kids. It would also put children in danger. At least 90% of the scholars walk to and from school. From Dr. Martin Luther King Elementary Middle School to Edgecombe is a 27-minute walk. So imagine a scholar walking there from farther away. Scholars would have to start over. They would have to find a new way to get around, make new friends, and take into consideration of being bullied. Also, the older kids that have younger siblings will be at a whole different school. Pimlico is a 15-minute walk from Edgecombe, so middle school scholars will be walking 42 minutes to school and back home from school. And both schools let out at the same time. So how would that work for older siblings who have to pick up younger siblings? Keeping the school open will not only keep us safe, but it will keep this big happy family together. I hope you keep the, open the school that not only accept me for my diversity, but it's also like a second home to me. Thank you.
Our next guest is Ms. Bond, Latrea Bond.
Hello. Okay. Hello, Commissioner, Chairperson, Dr. Santa Lisa's. Thanks for this opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Latrea Bond and I'm an ad associate at Dr. Martin Luther King Elementary Middle School. One thing that I'm in charge of at this school is the culture and climate. When I was first assigned the job, I thought, how can you change a culture that is filled with trauma and fighting? But after a lot of thinking, hard work, and all of the staff support, we are making a difference at Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Elementary Middle School. I've been at this school since 2001, and I must say that things have gotten so much better under Principal Brunson's leadership. Data proves that our attendance rate is better and that our suspension rate is down. The reason is because we work with our scholars to help them and we show empathy towards many situations. We have built relationships and our families know we have an open-door policy. We listen and we work with our families and stakeholders. This school works because we are a family that strive for scholar achievement and our scholars' social and emotional well-being. There are many initiatives in place at Dr. King. Initiatives that have led to better school attendance and improve the behavior of all scholars. Our theme this year is breaking barriers and building communities. And our scholars love to come to school, they love their teachers, and they love to learn. When we first heard about Dr. King closing, the reason was because of maintenance. We want the best for our scholars and we make sure that our scholars are warm in the winter and cool during the hot months. We provide extra additional support that's needed for our scholars. We break the barriers and we go the extra mile for them because we choose to and we want to. This is how communities are built. Our parents are very supportive in the scholars' learning and the many activities that we have at this school. Our school is becoming successful because we have a team that works together for our scholars every day and more than eight hours a day. That shows a lot. That shows determination, dedication, and commitment. There's been meetings every month and we had a great parent, we've had great parent turnouts during each meeting, during each event. Dr. King is our school, the scholars, the parents, the educators, all stakeholders. The school belongs to us and we make it work. We are a team and we believe in our mission, challenging our scholars to achieve. This is our home school and we don't want another school. We want our school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bond. Our next guest is Bernard Barber.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Santa Lisa's, and other board commissioners, good evening. My name is Bernard Barber and I'm a parent educator, pre-K classroom at Dr. MLK Elementary Middle School. And I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you this evening. And I'm here this evening with fellow colleagues of the clergy as our calling is about people. And certainly, they are with me here today in unity and solidarity as we make the concern for our young folks. And so I am here primarily because of the students, but also the parents, the guardians, and the community around Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Elementary Middle School. I'm here because of the concern that I have for the well-being of our students. And they are my priority. Every day for at least 180 days a year, these precious students, they make their way through the doors of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior in the dark, in the rain, in the snow, in the cold, and the heat because Dr. Martin Luther King Junior School is a sanctuary. It's a sanctuary for learning, but not just for learning. It's a sanctuary for survival. The students come through the doors of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior School surviving the trauma, the violence, and the pressures of life. And I dare say that many of us around this room have never experienced or endured. For years, this community has been abandoned, as evidenced by the condition of the school building, and has not been the fault of the students who walk its halls or sit in its classrooms. We as the students, we, excuse me, we as citizens of Baltimore ought to be outraged at how we take care of our facilities. If our school's namesake, the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Junior, was here this evening, I believe he would say, in a sense, we have come to our school headquarters to cash a check. And when the architects of the school district wrote the magnificent words, "City Schools Blueprint for Success", they were signing a promissory note to which every student was to fall heir that includes the students at Dr. Martin Luther King Junior School. This note was a promise of students' wholeness, literacy, and staff leadership. It is obvious today that Baltimore City has defaulted on the promissory note insofar as the student wholeness is concerned. But we refuse to believe that the bank of justice is bankrupt. We refuse to believe that there are insufficient funds in the vault of opportunity of this great city. We refuse to believe that the foundation of support, safety, and stability of our young folks established at Dr. Martin Luther King is bankrupt. And so, as I close out, I just want you to know that I have the audacity to believe that this school board of commissioners can work with Dr. King and the community. I have the audacity to believe that we can find a way to keep Dr. Martin Luther King School open. I have the audacity to believe that we are all in this together. And so let's issue this SOS: Save our schools, save our scholars, and save our students.
Thank you, sir. Patricia Chinia?
Yeah, first of all, I'm happy to see some of my colleagues who are sitting here from our church body. But I also wanted to just, I want to make some comments as a person who started my career as a principal in the neighborhood of Dr. Martin Luther King. I was the principal of Malcolm X Elementary School, as some of you may remember. I'm bringing that up because I know this community and I know what this community has done in the past. And my hope is, whatever decision, because the recommendation here was really around having a safe environment for our children. It was not around the quality of the program at this point, but really not to have a building that was in desperate need of repairs and work to be done. So my hope is that, as Mr. Barber, Reverend Barber, has said, that the community will rally and come together and that we can work together on whatever a solution might be. I'm not, I'm just saying, because I know the community has done it before. When Malcolm X closed, it was Martin Luther King that welcomed those students wholeheartedly and they became a part of your school community. So I'm hopeful that we can look at the same type of cooperation in the future.
I share that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next guest is Patricia Thompson.
Can everyone hear me? Good evening. My name is Patricia Thompson and I am a social worker by profession. Been in private practice for over 40 years. I officially retired in 2015. And after the election, I knew I had to get back out and do something. So I decided that I wanted to work in the city, my city that I love, and needed to decide where that would be. And because my church, New Thomas Baptist Church, has adopted several schools in the city, Martin Luther King became the place for me. So I started there in September 2017. I have a nonprofit called Generations Family Services. And I began working at the school, which welcomed me. I was very impressed with the compassion that I see the teachers show the children. I see children coming to school distressed from whatever they have to deal with in their communities. And my goal has been to provide trauma services because I know that they've experienced it, maybe don't even recognize that that's what's happening with them, what they're experiencing every day. I've been fortunate enough to receive a couple of grants through the Governor's Office on Crime Control and Prevention. The first grant is to provide services to survivors of homicide victims. And so we've identified children in the school who have experienced that and we are helping them to address those losses. The second grant, I just got notified yesterday, is for trauma services. It's called TIPS, Trauma Intervention and Prevention Services, which is designed to provide an after-school program for children so they can have a safe place to be, not have to rush home to the community, get their homework and studies done, but most of all, have fun and de-stress. And it's not going to solve the crime issue in the community, but it will interrupt it for them for a period of time every day. So I'm hoping very much that Martin Luther King can benefit from this service, that we will hopefully continue to provide. I'm also training interns to come and do counseling with me because in my first year, I had over 42 referrals and I realized I can't do it all by myself. So I am also training social worker interns to come and help as well.
And just quickly, my name is Kalique Sims and I am, push the button. Oh, thank you. And I represent Park Heights Renaissance, which is a community development organization that works with seven schools in the Park Heights neighborhood. And just this year, we had the pleasure of partnering with Ms. Thompson and Principal Brunson at MLK to create a trauma-informed care program, an after-school program. We were able to raise funds for that program and it launched just two weeks ago. It's called Oasis and we have 15 bright and wonderful students who are participating in that. But Park Heights Renaissance has an education strategic plan that includes all the Park Heights schools as well as the Park Heights Master Plan. And so we just want to ask that you think about the idea that we are creating community development and revitalizing the entire Park Heights community through our schools. And so it's essential that we keep Martin Luther King open and that we support it so that we can build our whole community development, not just our school's success, but the success of Park Heights as a neighborhood moving forward around the strength of our schools. So just know that MLK has the full backing of Park Heights Renaissance and so many community partners that we work with.
Thank you. Ladies, ladies, hold on, hold on. Commissioner Richardson?
I just want to know if you could submit to Christian that Park Heights plan?
Will do.
Thank you very much.
Our next guest is Frank Cross. Did I say your last name properly?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Frank Cross. I've served for 35 years as a child advocate, social worker, and attorney. 18 of those years here in Baltimore. My special professional focus is childhood trauma. I'm here to share my deep concern about the future of the students at Monarch Academy. Closing Monarch will be devastating to its students. Monarch students will suffer significant stresses of lost relationships, lost emotional and physical safety, lost mental health supports, and for many, lost access to food, clothing, and enrichment resources. Hundreds of Monarch students will be traumatized by such a closing, leaving them depressed, anxious, discouraged, angry, and hopeless. anxious, discouraged, angry, and hopeless. The devastating outcomes of school closure are well documented, and candidly, the research is overwhelming in its condemnation of school closures. 2017 research from Stanford University establishes that closing schools in and of itself does not lead to higher academic performance. Students must have better schools to go to if the benefit of closure is worth the trauma it causes. Better school alternatives for most Monarch students are unlikely. Seven of every 10, 67% in fact, of Monarch students would be returned to neighborhood schools with academic performance outcomes that are no better and many worse than Monarchs. In all the rationale relied upon in City School staff's recommendation to close Monarch, a lack of evidence exists on how closing Monarch will specifically benefit Monarch students in any way. And there is no available analysis of the damage closing will cause these students. Trauma to students is the only guaranteed outcome of closure. In its 2017 analysis of school closings in 26 states across the country, the National Education Policy Center at the University of Colorado specifically cautioned school boards that a vast amount of research documents that damage school closings due to children and communities is overwhelming, and it cites very few benefits of such closing. Numerous studies, the NA PC found, confirm that closing schools in the name of improving student achievement is a, quote, "high-risk, low-grain strategy," unquote, that fails to increase students' achievement and harms their overall well-being. These same studies found that, in reality, students struggle academically, socially, and emotionally after their school is closed. Simply put, research demonstrates that children suffer when their schools are closed. Closing Monarch only perpetuates another trauma on students, a devastating loss of a place that is safe from the violence outside, that provides real continuity, and that makes each child feel like a valued member of a secure and healthy community. In a student body already staggered by trauma, closing Monarch will result in students suffering behavioral problems, anxiety, depression, health problems, attentional issues, and post-traumatic stress disorder.
Sir?
And for what? Yes, ma'am. What is the promised benefit to them that you are making in return for their children's suffering and from taking from them the choices parents have made for their children? Yes, you would say to them, "It is in your child's best interest that we, the board, are closing the school you intentionally chose for your child. Yes, we recognize your children will suffer, but our promise is in return that we will provide each of them what?" The lack of answer to that question is the forgotten and, in my mind, the most important, moral, ethical, and legally required component of your decision. On January 8th, it is ultimately your choice: park in pain or stability? Choice and promise? Our students' lives hang in the balance. Thank you.
Our next guest is Carolyn Umana.
Do I push it? Oh, okay. Good evening. My name is Caroline Umana, and I am representing Roots and Branches School Garden and Afternoon Garden Club. I want to focus on something positive, joyful, and it has been, I have been running this club for over eight years. I'm a founding parent. I wrote the application for the nutrition and for the garden club design and the curriculum. And it is absolutely a joyful, positive, community-building experience. Look at these photos here. This is my first garden club. We started out with just one garden bed and nine students, and now we have 11 beds. We have a butterfly garden. We have an herb garden. We have a fruit orchard. We build all of this as a community-building event. So please understand that this is not, we're in West Baltimore, people. We're four blocks away from where Freddie Gray was picked up. This is a very, very sad neighborhood, but we're still here and we want to stay here. We are an active part of the community. We give community free suppers every month. We use compost from our garden. We use fresh fruits and vegetables, and the kids have learned so much about healthy eating, nutrition, growing their own food, sustainability, and being stewards of the earth. I also want to tell you that there are very, there are so many community relationships that we have built with faith communities, with the school gardens, the master gardeners. We have gone to eight different urban gardens for field trips, for farms. We have relationships with the urban farmers. On the night of the riots, I was actually with a friend who's an African-American farmer, and I was totally oblivious to what was going on around us because we were in a smoothie class trying to figure out how to make produce using our smoothies. And then, and then I was so sad and so angry when all of the schools were closed in Baltimore City. And our kids, who rely on the free lunch program from Title I, had to go without their meals. And we had our Mother's Day. We make these herb baskets, and we've got rain boots. All of this I run after. I just do this on my own as a volunteer. Okay, this is not something that you want to, you want to shut down. This is something positive in our city. We need this. We need to continue the good that's happening, even if this is just a drop in the bucket. We need this. And also, I just want to close that we are, during the school year, the food goes to, the produce goes to our, our community in the school. But during the summer, we have been donating over 30 pounds of vegetables to faith communities. I have donated to a synagogue. I have donated to St. Peter Claver, which is in West Baltimore, a Catholic church just around the corner from our school. And last year, we donated to the Islamic Center, a mosque here in Catonsville. This year, I've already arranged to donate produce to a Buddhist temple. Please, for the gut of life, please, please, keep the school open and the garden. To grow a garden is to have faith in the future. Thank you. Oh, I forgot. I'm now growing mushrooms. I'm growing mushrooms as a permaculture to teach the kids, and this is the first time I'm doing this. Very exciting. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next guest is Jarrell Bratcher.
Good evening. I'm a founding member of Monarch Academy. I was there since the school's inception in 2011 and then caught up in the reduction in force in, I believe, in 2015. There was a question that you all asked that I'm just basically going to use to cover my response. You asked, "Where do kids go after they leave Monarch?" Many of the students, so when we initially started, we didn't have the capacity or didn't think about sort of tracking where students would go after they left Monarch, when they would go on to high school. But I do know that many of our students have gone on to City College High School, Poly Western, Baltimore School for the Arts, Baltimore School for Design, most recently Bard, Dunbar, and even some private high schools, to name a few: Mercy, Roland Park, Brenmar, Gilman, Crystal Ray, Friends Catholic High School, IND, and Archbishop Curley. And next year, our first students who graduated as our first eighth grade, our graduating class in eighth grade, they'll actually be graduating from high school in the 12th grade. And so, many of them will be going to statewide colleges across this state. I don't know of any that are actually going to colleges outside of this state, and many on scholarships. And they are doing well in their school environments where they reside. And I'm not sure if there's information at the district level where you can track and monitor and see where many of the students from Monarch goes, but if you were to look at some of that information, you would be pretty impressed by, you know, where those students have gone on to. Also, Monarch, like other schools, have partnered with Morgan, Hopkins, Loyola in their efforts to increase child wholeness, leadership, growth, academics, correctability, and success. And also, in 2013, Monarch and myself were crucial in passing of a city council resolution called Prepareness and Safety in Baltimore City Schools and Communities. And one of the many outcomes of that was the use and implementation of Raptor, the caste System, across all schools across this district. And I believe that's still being used along with some of the other recommendations that we had made before city council as well across this district. So, you know, Monarch has also made a deep commitment, not only to its school, its families, its staff, its this community, but also this city and state as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bratcher. Our next guest is Michael Plummer.
We just would ask that you really watch the list closely. Some people are popping in and out who did not sign up. Many of them have, most of them have, but some do not. We're losing people because relying people to pop in and out who did not sign up. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I am going by the list, but, for example, Michael Plummer signed up, but we're getting consistently people signing up and bringing two and three people with him. This is not a panel situation, so I just want to be careful. So, Mr. Plummer?
Thanks. I printed my name well this time, so you could understand it. I listened, so. My name is Michael Plummer. I'm the Deputy Director of School Administration for the Baltimore Teacher Network, the Charter Operator for Roots and Branches. I first want to thank you all for listening so intently to the powerful testimony this evening. This process is a tough process. It's enabled our organization to look at our processes and has given us the opportunity to actually make them better. We take your concerns very seriously. With that said, we will be delivering a detailed action plan to the board and to the Office of New Initiatives, addressing the areas of concern you've outlined to us tomorrow. I believe, our organization believes, we have the knowledge, the resources, and the community support to make Roots and Branches even better. I don't want to take up my time, and this is how we initially planned it, so I apologize it, but I don't think I could articulate it as well as one of our community partners, Antoinette Mugar from Harlem Park West, can articulate it. They're our partner. We're in their community, and I want her to speak to that.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Antoinette Mugar, and by trade, I'm a registered nurse case manager. I currently work at University of Maryland, and I've also worked at Sinai Hospital. I am, I chair the Social Justice Subcommittee for the Honorable Shirley Nathan Pulliam on Social Determinants of Health. Roots and Branches is serving our community well. They are our main anchoring partner. We do all of our community events there. I also have a personal relationship with Roots and Branches. My niece, who was in foster care, came to live with me when she was just five years old. She was attending Harlem Park, and we had experienced a lot of difficulties. I won't go into detail. She did so well at Roots and Branches, she was accepted into the seed school. So the school has partnered with the build organization, the police department, the Western District Police Department, the neighborhood substance abuse. So we are addressing the social determinants of health and all those aces that are adversely impacting our students and parents. And Ms. Ann has been very good with bringing all of us together to make the school a better place. So I implore you to help us work on our action plan so we can continue to do the good work that we're doing. The school is not only a brick-and-mortar academic building, but we are addressing those psychosocial needs, those behavioral issues, and doing good work in the community. I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next guest is Michael Susko.
Stand corrected, I misspoke. And actually, very few people have gone over by more than a few seconds, so it is appropriate, it is okay for people to come as a group and then use the allotted time. So I misspoke a few seconds ago. I apologize for that.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Michael Susko, and I'm a board member at Roots and Branches, and I was formerly staff and a founder-parent. And I've already testified last week, but today I've come to alert you to a film that we produced and just posted on our website, Roots and Branches. It's a professional film, quality-wise, but unscripted, where you get to hear firsthand what and see what it looks like at Roots and Branches School. What's unique to the film, as I was sort of sitting and waiting for my testimony, is that you get a sense of a place. Of course, you can visit, but a film can convey that. And the sense that I get from watching the film and having been there is that it's a joyful place. It's a joyful place where learning occurs. I think that's a good combination. You can sort of tell in a school if there is a mood that's positive and if there's actual learning occurring. So that's one thing that the film, so I invite you to take a look at that film seriously, and I'll have a handout I'll give to you before I leave that gives you the sight. And also, a second thing is that you get to hear the voices of the people who can't come tonight. It's difficult for the people in the neighborhood. They have, they're working multiple jobs sometimes, they've got kids, so they can't always show up. So here are some of the voices of just the parents that showed the one day of filming that we had, and just two or three voices. One dad said, "We were especially interested in bringing our children here because of the arts and sciences, which is a very much-needed curriculum in the inner city. Arts and science will be the future, and we should introduce our students as much as possible to them." So that's a big part of Roots and Branches. Elementary school kids may not get much sciences, much less art integration, so they get a rich combination there. Here's a mom talking about her child. "I brought my child here because I heard the school was really good with small children, especially those who aren't as verbal as they should be. My son is very quiet, and I thought he should be at a smaller school where he could eventually be comfortable, warm up, and be himself around other people. I don't want to send him to a larger-population school where he might get swallowed up by everyone else. He's not the type of child that speaks up, but he needs attention." And so far, the school has been doing a really good job at that, so it's a very positive climate for this joyful learning to occur. And there are some students, and they'll talk about what's important to them, and often they say "resources." And what they meant by that is that there are all these specials that they can do, like music, dance, library, field trips. And so, they'll say things like, "You have music, art, and movement. We get to have field trips. We get to do things other schools don't get to do." Another child indicating his joy in learning, "We get to do fun stuff in math, like fractions. Fractions are fun. We get to do a lot of science." We don't hear that every day, and so when you hear stuff like that, you know something is clicking. So I guess I would just sum up by saying, we need, you know, for Roots and Branches to get a sense of the place, it's hard to sort of get a sense without maybe having been there a while, but a film can convey a dimension of that. And so, I ask you to look at the film, see the joy in the children's faces, and hear the voices, and our hope is that the title of the film will be fulfilled, so the children will keep singing.
Thank you very much. I get it. So I reduced you from five to three last time. You said, hmm, three plus three is six.
You just divided into parts, right? Just a second, just let me organize my little system. It might look a little messy, but it makes sense. That's on. All right, I'm going to do my best not to go beyond my time. I'm ready. So, I'm here. Good evening to all. Thank you for the opportunity of being here and be able to express my perspectives. So, I would like to start by stating that I'm here in behalf of NACA, representing myself and my husband, Daniel Hawkins, who is in the hospital with a very severe heart problem. He, both my husband and I, we believe that it would be really important, really vital for us to be here to show the support to NACA. And I'm going to explain a little bit why. So... So, okay. One of the reasons I'm here today is to inspire my students to see what it takes when you have a vision and a passion. My son, to inspire my son and my students, and I have some students here tonight. So, and hopefully, to be, by telling this story, to be an inspiration for future NACA scholars. So, part of my philosophy of teaching comes with two aspects. You have the art and the science of education. A lot of people talk about that. The art would be the humanity, the relationship that takes place between teacher and student. And then, research comes, research-based instruction comes with that science. So, when it comes to, to students at NACA and myself, I'm gonna just really cut to the, the main aspect here. I came from Brazil. I'm a Brazilian. I was born during a dictatorship. I, my family was in complete poverty. We are, we were homeless. No one in my family were and is educated beyond middle school. Because of educators just like us at NACA, I was able to open the perspectives of my life. And I'm here today because they helped me to, to change myself by the speech for, "I think I can, I think I can." They told me, "Yes, you can." And then, I could, finally, I told myself, "I know I can." It was not easy. I overcame cancer and other things, but I am now a doctor candidate at Johns Hopkins University. So, the, the fact that I overcame, my, our students can too. And at NACA, we are passionate about our students, and we are working to make changes that, that are necessary. But we want to change lives. That's the whole thing. So, please, help us to keep that.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins, and best wishes to your husband.
Thank you.
Our next guest is Dante Clark.
Thanks for having me. I was here last week, I just didn't get the chance to speak. Um, my name is Dante Clark. I'm on behalf, here on behalf of Monarch Academy. I'm a parent. I have four kids, there's, well, three now, but my oldest daughter, sixteen, she went to Monarch when they first opened. Currently, she's at Bard. She was accepted to City and Poly, but she chose to go to Bard. She just finished her high school part of it, so in 2020, she'll be getting her AA. So, she'll have her AA and her high school diploma in 2020. She has a part-time job. She just got her license. My, since my kids been going to Monarch, they've been on the honor role, since they've been going, all four of them. Right now, Carmen, Carmen Clark is my daughter that goes to Bard. You can look her up. She's getting As and Bs now, still. My youngest ones, I have them in second, third, and fourth grade. They, like I said, they've been on the older roles since they've been at Monarch. Other than that, I'm really not gonna talk about Monarch itself, how they, in, in helping the community far as affordable housing, and they bus hundreds of students, you know, from all over the city to Monarch, uh, 'cause I come from West Baltimore, and, uh, my school, my zone school is right next to my house. My daughter was going there from the first to the third grade. Wasn't a good experience, and, um, I'm not sure what's gonna happen if y'all close Monarch, because have a thousand students that basically are gonna be headed out back to their zone schools, which I know personal kids from, that's at, uh, Monarch now, that's from maybe, um, Cherry Hill, just from coaching football, and I know from experience, running into coaches and kids, this kid wasn't doing well. I was surprised to see him at Monarch. And I asked about him, 'cause I've been at Monarch from the beginning. I'm an original parent. So, it was really concerning that he was doing, he's doing pretty good there now. I was surprised, because I know how bad he had it over at Cherry Hill. So, my main concern is closing the school, sending thousands of kids back to a zone school where they weren't doing so well at. And now, and I see a lot of kids at Monarch, they love to learn. And when you take that, and when you have that in a child, you can only do good. You're only gonna get better. This, this, uh, staff that's here now, the principal and everyone, they just came in a year ago. Last year was their first year here. I've seen the school turn back around. They're getting better to where they first started. Uh, principal, before that, I had some doubts myself, but what they have now, I just see the school getting, going back to its original purpose, and they're doing what they're supposed to do. I just, I just have questions for you guys. You guys say you, you're comparing them to, you're doing the things for comparison schools? What school, I don't know any other schools that's towards Monarch, like having people coming from Cherry Hill, West Baltimore. I'm not sure, but I don't know what school compares to Monarch when you look at those comparisons, 'cause I'm, I'm taking it far as, are you getting test scores from Beechfield? Are you getting test scores from Cherry Hill, from Farley, and looking at them? 'Cause I'm just worried about that. I'm just worried about my kids going back to the zone schools they came from.
Thank, thank you, sir. We, we in fact have quite a few schools that draw kids from all over the city.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just asking.
So, just so, I, I don't have the list in front of me, but there's a lot of them.
All right, thank you.
Both charter and traditional, frankly. And Reverend Gray, I, you stepped out. I, I stand corrected. I was incorrect in my response to your comment. It is in fact okay for people to bring people up with them, but just that, that group as a whole needs to stay within the time limit. I have allowed particularly the students to go a little over, and so I'm, I'm...
I, we appreciate the apology. It's just, it's really, we're, we're a tiny school.
No, I'm...
You know, and now for our, our people to be leaving, that's really sad.
No, I'm calling people in the order that they're called.
Right, but...
And I'm not...
I was out there all, I've been out there since, since everyone signed up. I counted them, and I've counted who's been here tonight.
I have let each person come up, multiple people have brought multiple people with them, and they have all spoken within the time limit, the combined total. And what, after I responded to you, someone checked the policy. It is okay. So, I'm doing...
I, I appreciate it.
I'm doing my best.
I appreciate it.
That's all I can tell you.
But, you know, if we count forty people, and already fifty have gone, that's not a match.
None of it, I tried.
We're on number, we're not on fifty.
I tried.
No, not that far off.
I tried.
But they're way past.
Our next guest is, we're way past, because we took the time to ask some questions, not because people spoke.
I appreciate it.
Our next guest is Chic, uh, Ms. Carol, uh, Chic, um, Chicaina? Thank you. Sorry for that problem.
Hey. Hello, my name is Chicaina Carroll. I'm currently a sophomore at Western High School. I'm a Monarch alumni. I began going to Monarch Academy in 2010 as a third grader. While at Monarch, I participated in many programs such as robotics, band, dance, and school plays. At Monarch, I was able to excel with the help of my wonderful teachers. In my classes at Monarch, I learned many of the things that I'm currently learning at Western or learnt last year as a freshman. Monarch has not only taught me academic lessons, but life lessons as well. For most, the transition from middle school into high school can be challenging, but coming from Monarch, for me, it was not at all challenging. My freshman year, I was able to reach an average GPA of 4.3. At Western, I'm at the top of my class. Without the help of Monarch, this would have never been possible. Monarch is not only a school, but is a family. It has helped me to build my character and open up, because before going to Monarch, I wouldn't have had the courage to stand here before you today. If I could have chosen to stay at Monarch, I would have. Going to Monarch was a wonderful experience, and I would hate for current and future students to not have the experience I did. I hope that you all make the right decision and consider the sterling work and lessons Monarch has provided to its students in the process of making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next, our next guest is Jessica Echols.
Yes, I can. We are at number thirty-six.
Number thirty-six?
Thirty-six.
Today, I'm speaking on behalf of Northwood Apple Community Academy. I've worked at NACA for the past four years as a second-grade ELA teacher and a member of the I L T. My positions in the school have allowed me to see things from a unique position. As a member of the instructional leadership team, I've worked with a team of young enthusiastic and talented teachers and staff who have worked tirelessly to plan, implement, and reflect on lessons to inspire and engage their scholars, while still also implementing the district and state standards. These are the same individuals who, if you did not know any better, you would not think our school day ended at 2:45, 'cause many of whom are still after, at school, working well into four and five o'clock. Working with these passionate individuals on the I L T, we created action plans to address the needs of our school, and we have shown that we have made progress in some of these areas of need. My position as a second-grade teacher has placed me in the middle grade of our K through five schools, and I have been able to see the growth of scholars in kindergarten, whose behavior would have caused them to be written off and cast aside in other school settings, to grow and thrive with the guidance of caring individuals who set high expectations and enforce high character development. And as I pass my scholars along, I feel comfortable knowing that the teachers that they go with in the higher grades will care for them as I did. When you have a group of people in a school community who are willing to do work in a high-need setting, I feel that it would make sense to allow them to do their work. And I'm asking you to reconsider your recommendation and save NACA. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Echols. Are, are you Victoria?
No, I am Ms. Nancy Coger.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Dr. Santelis, as Commissioners. My name is Nancy Coger. I am a paraeducator. I have been at NACA since its beginning fourteen years ago. So, I'm going to let you hear from my scholars right now, and this is just an example of what we hear every single morning from our scholars. And this was written with them in mind, the kind of scholar we wanted at NACA.
For whoever's keeping the timer, please reset it to three, because she actually did sign up as a separate speaker, and I want to make sure, uh, Ms. Coger and her students get the full three minutes.
Okay, this is how we start. Ready, begin.
Good afternoon. I am a student of the Northwood Apple Community Academy. I am special and uniquely creative. There is no one else like me. I am loving, kind, respectful, honest, truthful, and courageous. I am committed to walking in peace. I have aspired to excellence in all my work in these, because I have a voice in this world, and I am sexy, sexy, sexy. If I can believe it, I can achieve it.
And in that, awesome job, scholars. And in that pledge, you hear the three pillars of NACA, superior NACA academics, superior character development, and freedom and democracy. Now, Commissioners, I'd like for you to do this for me right now. I'd like for you to imagine, I'd like for you to imagine a school, no, a family, that is small enough that when every student walks in the door, their name, they are known by name, where classrooms, classroom sizes are still small, ideally what every teacher and every parent would like. A family where, if a parent is sick and has breast cancer, and they say, "I can't pick up my child, can you hold my child, 'cause I'm still in chemo?" Or when a parent calls and says, "You know what? I've fallen on some hard times," and we can say, "Oh, come on back here, we can help you out with our food drive." Imagine that back in the day discipline where not only Ms. Ms. Mary saw you, but your mama's the ma, I'm gonna, uh, Ms. Mary's gonna tell your mama, "We have all that. Good cop, bad cop." Well, guess what? I'm gonna discipline Tommy today. You love on him, because children need love while they're being disciplined. Imagine a school where character and morals is taught on purpose every morning in a school-wide assembly, where they receive principles like empathy, confidence, respect, and integrity, and it's talked about on purpose through videos and journal writings. Imagine a school where kindergarten, the first word they hear, the first vocabulary word is ancestors, and by third grade and second grade, they're listening to oppression, where in this world where history is being changed, they are taught the truth, but not in a way to lash out angrily, but in a way that will empower them, with their eyes open when they hear the truth about where they came from, and that will empower them. When children come back to you and say, "The, the troubled ones," you know what? We didn't appreciate NACA then, but now we know, because you really love on us, and they come back, and they come back time after time, and I see my time is going. So, I'm going to say this in closing. Everyone in here can agree that there is a crisis in Baltimore right now. NACA is not like any other school, where the children that we are seeing have trauma, but we do not give up on them. We take the time to work with them. Progress is not seen all the time in scores, but it's seen in children learning how to solve conflicts in other ways. So, in closing, I'd just like to say and ask respectfully that you would consider not closing the doors of NACA, because I feel like, and, and, not just NACA, but on behalf of all of the schools here, if we can save a handful of children, and many of us are doing more than that, but if we can save a handful of children, then that's a handful of children in Baltimore City that will not be in the system, and we are doing that. So, I thank you for hearing us.
Thank you very much. Our next guest is Victoria Long.
My name is Victoria Long. I am an alumni from NACA. I went there from kindergarten to fifth grade, and I left for sixth grade, but had to come back, because I didn't find like the love and the care that I, you know, received from NACA at any, you know, at the other school I was at. It's just like, the school's just great. That's, you know, it's just so much you can learn, and while you're there, you don't appreciate it, you're like, "Ah, they hate us, you know, they're so mad, da-da-da-da." But once you leave, you're like, "Man, I take life lessons." Like, I'm, I'm a senior at Western right now, and they prepared me, because I walked into their doors a troubled child. I left their doors, still a little rickety, but I took so much, like, so mu, I'm trying not to get emotional, I'm sorry. I took so much just learning from Dr. Gray and Ms. Coger, like Mrs. Sadler, they watched me grow from a little five-year-old, you know, and it's, it's just a lot. So, the, the children that you see that they brought in here today, never think for a second that, you know, "Oh, they're not learning anything, or they're not getting enough." They're getting everything and more, they just don't know it right now. So, what I'm asking, and what we're all asking, is that you just keep the doors open long enough for us to just touch the lives of other students, you know, just, just, you know, just spread the love, that's all. It, because it's so much, and it really does mean a lot when you go back and you walk through those hallways, and you look at the desks and the chairs that you used to sit in, and you're like, "Wow." It's just, I've come so far, and you feel so accomplished, because it's like, I don't know where I'd be if I didn't come from a place where I felt like I was loved and cared for, you know? So, yeah, I mean, I, I still got some time left. I don't really wanna say too much more, but just keep them open, you know? As long as it can go, just keep it going, because they, they love us, we love them, and that's all. So, yeah, thank you. Good night.
Good luck, good... Ms. Long, good luck with your senior year. Our next guest, first name Mark, I think the last name is Gregory?
Greg War.
Greg War.
I, I can take his spot.
Speed us up.
Awesome. Representative of NACA, who signed up as well, if it's okay.
You're, you're good, you're good.
Thank you so much. Greeting board members, I am Larry Sadler, and I've been teaching in Baltimore City public schools for fourteen years, all of them with NACA. I've had the opportunity to begin my teaching career at NACA when it first opened in 2005, and I graduated from Morgan State University, where I was inspired by my professor, Dr. Gray, who left a positive impression on me by taking an interest in my learning and development. This investment in my growth transition into me having a direct impact on the lives of the youth in the community, and soon after that, I, I earned the position of a t, elementary school teacher at NACA. To me, NACA represents forward thinking, as we give our students the foundation that they need to be productive students and people. It represents the capacity to be inclusive with parents, to build a strong school, a strong neighborhood, and a strong community. strong neighborhood, and a strong community. More than anything, it represents history, learning from the past in a way that galvanizes our students and gives them the tools they need to make the best of the present, which will catapult them into making a living and a life. So I'll end with my belief in NACA's vast potential. We've had some remarkable achievements in our short yet important fourteen-year history, and our best years are not behind us. We just need more time to continue to produce some of Baltimore's brightest and greatest minds. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next guest is Rick Lieberger. Our next guest is Linda Han, Hannison?
Linda Harrison.
Okay. Sorry, I mispronounced the name.
Oh, no, that was, it's my writing, it's not you. Good evening.
Join the club.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, Council, Commissioner, Dr. Santa Lisa. I'm Linda Harrison, Director of Special Projects for Baltimore Teacher Network, and I have to tell you, I'm here to speak on behalf of Roots and Branches. Now, honestly, Roots and Branches is a remarkable school. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I have a cold, so forgive me. Roots and Branches is a remarkable school, and it has excellent leadership, and it has a lot to offer the students, all right? And I want to say, as we know, it's sitting in a very, very struggling community, but it's the hottest thing going in the community to educate our children in a very, very positive way. We have an excellent leadership there, Ms. Ann Rossi. She is dynamic. We have excellent staff who comes to school every day because they want to be there, and they teach the children in the things that they need to teach them, and it's working out very well. We have music, we have art, we have sports for the activities in the afternoon, and the children love it. They feel very safe there. That community is incredible, it's just, the only thing you see now, I just see the school because I just try to block everything else out, but just look at the children coming every day to school, all right? Baltimore Teacher Network has partnered with Roots and Branches, all right? And they are the operators for this school, and, which is recent, several months ago, and they have a vision for the school. They believe in the school. Under the direction of Mr. Elijah Etheridge as the Executive Director for Baltimore Teacher Network, we have hired Mr. Michael Plummer. We believe in Mr. Plummer. He is at that school nearly every single day, working with the principal, working with the teachers, and getting things, we're working and moving and making things done. We're getting things done, we are. We want you to believe in us because we believe in that school, we believe in those teachers, we believe in the principal, we believe in Mr. Plummer, and we believe in Baltimore Teacher Network. The school needs us, we need the school, the community need the school. That is all that the children have. They don't have anything else to go, nothing else. They love that school. Some of them like to come on weekends, but we're not open really on weekends. Now, you heard about that, that planting, the planting of growing your own vegetables and fruits. Now, teaching elementary school children to do that, to grow your own food, you're giving yourself life, you're teaching life, all right? That's awesome. And so, please, keep this school open. We need Roots and Branches, we need you, we need your support. We have dynamic educators there, all right? We have the right people in place to push this school forward. Thank you so much. Happy holidays.
Madam Chair, Madam CEO, Commissioners. I graduated from high school in 1968 on June the 10th, and I entered the Maryland State Penitentiary two weeks later, on the 24th. I was a victim of a racist public school education, and that's what I'm going to focus on tonight. I couldn't help but notice that most of these schools that you want to shut down have predominantly black populations. I'm concerned because unless you really understand the developmental psychology of the black child, you cannot properly educate them. Contrary to popular belief, African children do not come to school behind European children, Asian children, or Hispanic children. African children come to school as they are, and they represent the collective historical experiences of African people. No other ethnic group or race have experienced the trauma that we experienced during chattel slavery, segregation, racism, oppression, which is basically ongoing. We still are oppressed and being traumatized. We didn't start at the same place where European children started, or Asian children, or Hispanic children. We started where we were, and we brought their baggage with us to school. The common core curriculum, in addition to the trials and tribulations of dealing with children who've been traumatized and still being traumatized, you have to consider that. And if you're just going to continue to close schools based on criterias that it takes more time for African children to reach, with the understanding that the tests have been culturally biased, racist for years, they were when I went to school, and very little has changed. These schools that you're trying to close, they need an extension of time to comply with whatever you say they need to comply with. And I am totally opposed to you closing these schools, with the exception of MLK. If it's a physical threat or danger, because I worked in construction for twenty years, and I know buildings collapse unexpectedly, and I would hate to see that happen to the MLK students. But if you, if you want to close MLK because of the condition that it's in, then you should offer them an alternative, a new school with the same name, and keep those children together.
Thank you, Mr. Casimo. Our next guest is Lamont Ray. Did I got that right?
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Good evening, panel. I appreciate the opportunity you have given me to speak on behalf of Monarch Academy. Where can I start? I had this all in here. Well, you know, everything that everyone has said already has basically been, in a nutshell, so there's no need for me to repeat it. But what I haven't heard was chance. I have two alumnus and three scholars that's currently at Monarch Academy. For the last five years, I've been involved with it. The current administrative, the current administrators that you have with them are very effective. They's been the most effective as of last year and this school year. They haven't really had a chance or opportunity or enough time to be fully effective. I'm kind of stuck in my words, I really don't know what to say. Everybody else covered pretty much everything, but it definitely is a family-oriented place. You definitely, when you go there, you meet the staff, and, you know, with me dealing with them for the last few years, it's definitely a family-oriented place, and you definitely can, you know, feel, feel, feel all of that. But case point being, they haven't had enough time, they are very effective, and they're very assertive to everything that, that you can even imagine, like, the people come up here and they telling you things, oh, yeah, this happened, and that happened, you know, so forth and so on. It's all true things, but they haven't had enough time. Rome wasn't built overnight. Rome wasn't built overnight. I do honestly believe that closing this school will be beyond drastic. They haven't had enough time. As far as the test scores go, so forth and so on, last year was like a basic introduction of the, the current, the current administrative team. It was a basic introduction. So as the students got to meet them as well as the teachers, and they get to furthermore, how can I put this, familiarize themselves with each other. They planted the seed, or should I say, the caterpillar went into the cocoon. And if they have enough time, as in a caterpillar in a cocoon, they'll evolve. Like I said, Rome wasn't built overnight. I firmly believe that if they had the opportunity and the time, everything that you want out of Monarch Academy, you will receive. There's no doubt in my mind. And the patience too, you know, you know, kids, they be kids. So, you know, the patience that this staff has is amazing, is amazing. It's, it's, I just, closing the school to me, in my opinion, would be a big mistake. I've, I've seen other schools throughout the years, and it's really no comparison. There's no need for me to say anything because I really haven't done the homework. I got you, I see you wrapping up. Close, close the Monarch though, I, I do believe it would be.
Thank you for, thank you for coming. Our next guest is Greg Gann.
So I want to follow up with the gentleman who spoke, I think, in favor of MLK, who addressed racist issues. I have a theme that I want to follow up on that, and it's not me. One is a book that I just finished that's called, the author is Eve Ewing, and it's called Ghosts in the Schoolyard, and it's about racism and school closings on Chicago, in Chicago's South Side. But what's happened there is very similar to what's happened in Baltimore. And the other is a report by David Johns, who is the Executive Director of the White House Initiative on Educational Excellence for African Americans. And so, when we talk about closing Monarch Academy without, we really have to face the million-pound gorilla in the room, which is really about opportunity and choice, and who has access to opportunity and who has access to, to choice in our community and who doesn't. That's what, to me, this is really all about. I'm almost one of the original board members of Monarch Academy. And so, just as this gentleman was talking about, the, the metrics of test scores or absenteeism to judge performance of our schools, what these authors are really pointing out is that we overlook that these metrics disproportionately affect learners of color. And all of our intentions, I think everyone in this room, is for equality, but the outcomes that result from using the same metrics irrespective of someone's zip code really results in what they term, what Eve terms, systemic educational institutional racism. And so, our school is really grounded in, I'm looking at the time, so I just want to point out a couple other things, and that is that charter schools are about equal opportunity. More than fifty years ago, the Supreme Court Board of Educ, Brown versus Board of Education was really about promising equal educational opportunity to all kids. That's what we, we seek to fulfill. And so, our question is, is Baltimore going to be a school for, for choice for all children regardless of their zip code? Is Baltimore City going to be supportive of equal opportunity for all of its students? And are we going to eradicate educational institutional racism so that all kids are treated equally in the city? Because, as you've heard from many others, our school too, we really, it's more than a school, we really are a family, and we're really pleading with you not to, to break up our family. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next guest is Noreen Smith. I'm going to guess that Ms. Smith left. Apologies to her. Our next guest is Robert Ketron, Katrone?
I will ask your indulgence, but I must speak from my seat. I am unable to move.
If you could, yes, sir, but we'll, we'll hand you the microphone, that's no problem at all. Thanks, Christian.
I actually didn't need the microphone to simply say.
It's about the technology and the.
I understand, okay, but.
It's all about the technology.
Well, I'm going to defy technology because I frankly have so much to say, it could not be said in three minutes. But I am here to let you know that both of my, I'm not only supportive of all of the people in this room, I am also supportive of the school commissioners and the school administration. And I'm here because I believe in children. And I believe that we have solutions, but it's going to take a whole lot more than happening. I've been in Baltimore since 1968, and I've got to tell you, I'm really embarrassed by our school system. So I will cede my remaining time back to the board.
Thank you, sir, for your interest in, in our proceedings. Our final guest tonight is Fresca Yerby. Thank you, Ms. Yerby, for your patience. Good evening.
I just wanted to come out tonight. It was weighing heavy on my heart when I found out the recommendation for Roots and Branches School to close. Just a little bit about the history of me and my son with Roots and Branches. When my son came to Roots and Branches, he could not read. My son was in the second grade, but he could not read. And I tried so hard, so desperately, and Ms. Ann Rozi, she seen me sit at the I E P table in tears because all I wanted was for my son to read. I broke down so many times, I just didn't understand. I thought it was something that I was doing wrong because I was doing everything, you know, they was telling us to do. But she and the staff there assured me that everything would be okay, and my son took off reading. It was just amazing how he took off reading. And I say to say this, a school, to me, if, I feel like if they aren't in it to help us as parents, given the support that we need, because it takes a village to raise a child. We are the parents, but we need strong support systems behind us to raise these kids. And Ms. Ann had been there for me the whole entire way. I am a volunteer at the school. I come in, I see the kids grow from year to year. Since my son had been there, I've seen his growth, and I'm just asking that, on the behalf of Roots and Branches School, that you would give them a chance. In the middle of Fulton Avenue and Monroe Street stands a landmark, a pillar of the community, and the kids really, really need that. It's nothing else I can say, they really need it, and I really pray that y'all would give them a chance. They really need it, and I really pray that y'all would give them a chance. Just give them another chance, that's all I'm asking. From a parent's view of being there every day with the staff, helping to assist the children that are in need, they have a wonderful system in place, a wonderful mental health system. They have a food pantry that they give, send home food to the kids, and they give out to the community. And they are a very big support system of the parents, so I ask that you would please look in your heart and give them another chance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public hearing, public forum. We appreciate everybody's involvement, and we certainly appreciate everybody's passion and interest and time. The next time the board will meet will be on Tuesday, January 8th. And with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Richardson moves. Do I have a second? Commissioner Bondima, all in favor. Commissioners Richardson, Bondima, Chinia, Kashani, Reed, Berkeley. Motion passes six-zero with three absent. Meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome. I heard you, and it made me think, because what I was trying to do, and I should have checked the policy, what I was trying.